Tonight's agenda is available on the counter, along the counter, and the request to speak cards are also on the counter. If you have a request to speak, they should be completed and turned in to the clerk prior to completion of any staff presentation, completion of the staff presentation. And also for speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission, please write item A on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. At this time, we will take up presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. And we do not have anything at this point in time, so we will move on to correspondence and staff communications from the planning commission secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you Chair Guerrero. Two quick items to note. First, you should have a memo in front of you from Mr. Laffey regarding agenda item number three. If you don't have one, please let us know, we will get you one, and we will address that matter when we get to that particular item. And then there's some different faces in the room tonight, so I'd like to introduce, on my left is Amanda Berlin, she's our assistant city manager, has been with us since October, and she'll be here in helping with item number two. And for any of you who don't know, we also have Jeff Mitchell, our city attorney, on my right, will also be assisting us tonight. So that concludes staff communications.
All right. I'm sorry Chair, there was also a piece of correspondence that came along with our commission packet that did not seem to be attached to an agenda item. Is that individual present?
I'm not aware of that individual present, but we did provide that to you since it was addressed to the commission.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is disclosure of ex parte communications. Is there any disclosure among the commissioners? No? Okay. And on our consent agenda, we have consideration and approval of the minutes in the February 18th commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Sternfeld moved, and Commissioner Ms. Tumbler seconded. All in favor, signal by say and aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? No? Okay. It's been approved. Our regular agenda has a public hearing regarding proposed municipal code title seventeen dash zoning amendments, development agreement, and a conditional use permit at thirty-one twenty-one Evergreen Avenue. Mr. Tilly, you'll be providing the presentation?
Yes, thank you very much. So, Commissioner, may recall at our last meeting, staff gave you a quick overview of some new legislation that was passed called the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. This law has been in effect since this January, and establishes a formal regulatory protocol for all matters related to medical marijuana. Establishes state licensing requirements, and it also was part of that establishes that anyone wishing to engage in these businesses must have any required local approvals as well to operate. So, and tonight, as part of that, we are bringing to you a sort of a three-part package of information that we were seeking your recommendation and action on tonight. And so I'd like to start with sort of the highest level, which is the proposed municipal code amendments. We're proposing some clarifications to the city's municipal code, specifically title seventeen, which is more colloquially known as the zoning ordinance, that would define a cannabis distribution facility. It would establish it as a separate land use item in the land use matrix, making any conditional use in the light industrial or M1 zone. And would also establish various requirements for such a facility, not the least of which is a development agreement, security plan, and other associated requirements, as especially in the agenda report. We are seeking the commission's recommendation tonight on this item, and we've included a resolution attached to your staff report that would convey the planning commission's recommendation to the city council, who would be taking final action on this item. As a subset of that, we've also provided to you a draft development agreement that would be between the city and the applicant for a project at thirty-one twenty-one Evergreen Avenue. This is also an entitlement that we are seeking your recommendation on to the city council, and we've included another resolution in your packet that would convey your recommendation on that item. This is an agreement between the city and the applicant that has been, that is proposed to be entered into, and tonight we're seeking your recommendation on that for council. This is important, because unlike a conditional use permit or subdivision map, this is agreement that doesn't run with the land, it's between the two parties. It provides additional assurances to both the city and the applicant for this project going forward, so that it may begin to operate. It implements some of the recommended requirements that are in the municipal code amendments that are also before you tonight that we're seeking your recommendation on. And so the third piece of this matter before you tonight is a conditional use permit. This is for a specific operation that's proposed at thirty-one twenty-one Evergreen Avenue in the Light Industrial District. This is an existing concrete tilt-up warehouse and distribution building, which the applicant, who is present tonight, and will have a presentation for you a little bit later, is proposing to operate a, what we are defining as a cannabis distribution facility. This is the operation where prepackaged marijuana would be brought to this site from the cultivator to this location, and redistributed to retail operations elsewhere. The building would be secure with no signage on it other than their address. The applicant would be using unmarked but secure vehicles for the transport of the material, and when it's brought to this site, prior to being unloaded, the vehicles would actually enter into the building before any loading or unloading would occur. We are seeking the planning commission's approval of this use permit tonight, which will be subject to final city council action on the recommended municipal code amendments and the development agreement. This is a similar format to how the commission has considered other projects in the past, where the commission, some of the level of entitlements, such as a tentative map, are a planning commission action, but those are still subject to final action by the city council, sometimes of a general plan amendment, or rezoning, or other types of approval that need the city council to be the final action. We actually do this relatively commonly, where there's a subsequent approval needed after the planning commission consideration, and most commonly that's done when there's a design review approval that's needed from the design review administrator, and we bring many projects forward to you on that basis. So there are three pieces tonight, and we'd be happy to discuss them individually, perhaps starting with the municipal code amendments, but we are seeking your action as in terms of a form of a recommendation on the municipal code amendments and development agreement, and then formal approval of the conditional use permit, which is predicated on final city council action on the other requested approvals. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we also have many other city staff representatives here that can assist in any questions you have.
Are there any questions at this time by the commissioners?
I've got one question, Chair. Could you confirm that a change in zoning would not change the conditional use permit aspect of this? Said another way, if a different applicant was coming forward with a similar proposal, say a couple of months from now, it would still come to the planning commission, it wouldn't go through administrator approval?
That's correct. The way this is set up is a, require, have to be in the M1 zone, and the way it's currently proposed, the development agreement and use permit, so that all, that would come before you.
Thank you for clarifying. And any other questions?
I'll hold mine.
Okay. All right, I will open the public hearing at this point in time for public comment, and I believe we have the applicant and...
Yes, the applicant and their team are present here.
Their team, a representative or all, all of you, one at a time, please, that would be great, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Staff. My name is Lauren Frazier, this is Mike Simpkins, and we represent River Wellness. We are a medical cannabis distributor, serving the medical cannabis industry in California, and we're seeking a conditional use permit in the city of West Sacramento. So, as the city manager mentioned, our business is different than what most people consider when they think of a cannabis business. We do not cultivate or grow, we don't manufacture products or package products on site, nor do we dispense or deliver products to patients. We're strictly limited in scope to the storage and transport of products, and ensuring a level of quality assurance before those products enter the retail environment. And by quality assurance, I mean, we are working with third-party laboratories to ensure that the products are fit for consumption, they've met certain safety requirements in their testing. And so the core functions of our business are really to provide that public safety through secure and safe storage and transport, as well as the consumer safety aspect through quality assurance, and of course, non-diversion through the traceability mechanisms that we offer. Traceability will be a large component of the implementation of the Medical Marijuana and Safety Act, and in doing so, the distributor will really play a vital role in that. So we're excited about the opportunity to work with the city of West Sacramento and call this our home. We think that it's strategically positioned both from a geographic perspective, as well as politically, and the ability to be a partner with the state, and a partner in compliance. We're open to your questions, and thank you in advance for your time.
All right, that's it? One more? All right. Are there any questions to my left? Yes.
Since you're up, given that it's just a distribution center, I just had one question. About how many truck trips per day do you anticipate, do we get in and out?
That's a very good question. Well, at the site, we will be working from that facility and servicing the local area, so it depends on the number of dispensaries and providers in the area in which we'd be working, so it's something that would gradually build. At this time, it'd be obviously a very minimal amount, but we anticipate that to grow over time as the, as the business itself grows. So it's a harder question to answer specifically.
Okay.
Can I, I think, you know, initially, I think to answer your question, I think where you're going is, you know, a few trucks just to start, but when they leave in the morning, they're kind of gone, they're not going in and out. They're leaving and they're really coming back in the afternoon. It's not a, it's not an in and out throughout the day operation.
Okay, thank you so much. I think that does answer my question.
Any other questions, Ms. Tumbler? All right, to your right.
I'm the oldest one, I don't understand. And, you know, I don't even know why we want to have that in our town, but are we, one of the big issues we had with marijuana is odor when people were growing it outside. What kind of odors are we going to have coming from your facility?
The products we're dealing with are all prepackaged, prepackaged in anti-odor containers. In addition, we are putting measures with operations to, you know, to even take it one step further, like if we zero, you could be essentially standing outside of the building and not have any odor.
Okay. You know, and part of, and I guess we'll get into the development agreement at the same time, part of it is you're going to have a security plan that someday you're going to propose. I was kind of thinking, I'd like to know how many machine guns are going to be outside the building to protect it.
Well, I don't think...
And you take it as a joke, but actually, I'm kind of serious, how many armed guards you're going to have to protect that area, and what it's going to do to the neighborhood.
Well, to answer your question, I don't think, ideally no machine guns. We're, you know, this is a very discreet, this warehouse would look like any warehouse up and down any industrial area. Again, I think we, you know, we talked about unmarked buildings, unmarked vehicles, very discreet, our vehicles are like little mini bands. The securities of the building would be inside, and it's pretty elaborate, and we have, we have security specialists, you know, helping us with that. But I think being more discreet on the outside is a better way to do it.
Well, I'm certain that's going to help a lot. But I mean, I guess, I was trying to figure out what we were going to do, and you asked me if I want to approve a development agreement, but it said that the plan's going to come later. I kind of like to know what you're going to do to secure our community, and there's nothing in here that even talks about it. Is that because you haven't secured the permits yet, so you're kind of waiting to put all this together?
Well, I mean, I guess, we haven't, to answer your question, we haven't done the build-out yet, but we know how to operate these type of facilities and to secure them.
You have other ones?
It's...
You have other facilities?
No, we have, I came from twenty-seven years in another industry, liquor wine industry.
Oh, you're my kind of man, I like that.
There's a lot of similarities to how you would secure that type of area, but even more so.
Well, I mean, I, I'm the worst person, because I see it on TV or in the newspaper, where people go into a place, kill people to take the marijuana and leave. That's why I'm curious what we're going to do to protect our community, and I didn't see anything in writing that's going to allow us to do that. You know, so it makes me a little uncomfortable. Okay, I'm in trouble now.
I just want to note that, you know, it's by design that there's no specifics about the security plan in the DA or in any of the public documents. Because of the security issue, you know, we weren't comfortable putting out, you know, a detailed plan of what they're intending to do, so they will, the DA does require a security plan to be in place before they begin operations, and that's in section nine point two.
Well, I'm obviously not a security expert, but I was hoping that, you know, there's guys behind us back there, like the police that know what's going on. I don't have a clue, but I was curious.
The applicants have coordinated with police and fire on the public safety and fire safety issues, and so...
That's fine. And perhaps, I just am asking the question because I don't, usually a development agreement, we have all the particulars in it, and I don't quite see it all. But I'll just go on with a couple more questions. It doesn't matter if that's what we're going to do.
Sure, we can have Lieutenant Steele address this topic more, once we finish, perhaps with your other questions.
There you go, maybe that'll be necessary. On page two of the staff report, Mr. Tilly wrote down towards the bottom that we're going to have no cultivation or retail sales, or transportation vehicles will be allowed. And then throughout it, we talked about transportation vehicles, so I don't know if that's just not really what you wanted to say. It's right before the proposed municipal code.
Yeah, what that was intending to say is that their vehicles would not have identifying signage on them either.
Oh, I read it to mean there was no transportation vehicles allowed, that's what it says.
That was not written as eloquently as it could have been, but that's what it was meant to say.
I just point that out for our own purpose. When we get into the development agreement, one of the other things that's written down here is that we're going to, the city, I guess, will receive a two and a half percent amount of money, tax of some type?
Yes, the, one of the provisions of the DA is the applicant providing a two-point-five percent of gross sales receipts from operations annually.
So, my only question again, which would make it easier for me to vote for a development agreement, is how do I know if that's good or bad? What's another city get? What's another city pay? What do they do all over the United States? How do we know if two and a half percent is good, or it should be? I'd like like ten or something, you know, but I mean, I'm just thinking out loud. I don't know what it takes.
I can speak to that a little bit. There are other jurisdictions that have authorized dispensaries, and a typical percentage of gross receipts that a dispensary or retail facility has gotten is five percent, but they have one point at which the product leaves. Our product may touch multiple facilities before it, before it enters the retail environment.
And again, you know, I mean, if I ask the question, I can guarantee you our council's going to ask the question. We probably want to see, you know, where is it? What are we trying to do? Where's it coming from? How can we in California, I don't even know if there's another dispensary in California, but if there is, what are they doing? And what's another city or another state doing? So I mean, I just didn't quite understand how that was going to work. My next question goes right after that, and it says that you're going to get all the required health and safety and all the required permits from the city and state. Do we get anything from the federal government, or we just not talk to them? Is it, or, there is no permit you can get from the federal government, right?
That's correct.
Because they still think it's illegal?
It's, yeah, it's considered a schedule one narcotic.
Okay.
We're doing everything under the Sacramento, the state law, and under two fifty...
You know, I, again, I try to, I try to understand the, the ability to make this work, and I, I was taught by an attorney many years ago that this comes down, that there's federal law, then there's state law, then there's city law, and you guys cannot form a city law that's going to preempt federal law. They just don't like that. The federal government gets really upset if we overrule them at our level.
The Attorney General guidelines came out that said that if you, a state has a robust regulatory system in place, that the federal government will not interfere with what the state enacts in relation to medical cannabis, or recreational cannabis.
Yeah, but that's the state. And I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to understand, this may be why we have an attorney that'll go, here's how it works. But I mean, I don't, I really don't understand how the state and the federal, and the city government can overrule a federal law and allow, according to the federal government, I know you're going to talk to me, Mr. Mitchell, but how we allow an illegal activity according to the federal government to take place in our city, and how we promote that is a good and viable thing to have.
There's a couple of pieces to the response. She's given you one piece, which is that the federal government has provided guidance to US attorneys, indicating the circumstances under which the federal government feels it's appropriate to step in, and one of the most important pieces was a robust regulatory scheme. There are also other factors that they identify, sale to minors and transportation to states that do not allow the sale of cannabis. We've addressed, I think, all of those in these documents. The reality is, the state of California allows this operation to occur. Now, you have a valid point, it is still a schedule one narcotic under federal law, but there are a number of states now that have fully legalized, or at least largely legalized, operations, and it's likely that that's the direction California will go later this year. But to protect the city, we do have a provision in the development agreement that allows for termination in the event an issue is raised by the state or federal level. And we're not able to resolve that with whatever agency it is that's raising that. The city has the power to terminate the development agreement on virtually no notice. So, my opinion is, we are fairly well protected. We, this issue is not new, we have discussed it with the council. Council, I believe, understands the risk and is prepared to consider this, and that's what we're doing now, so.
And, and I appreciate it. I, again, I tell you that I'm the oldest, and I just kind of don't understand how we do some of these things. And I guess my final comment, and everybody's so happy to know I'm almost done, but my final comment is, I'm finding it a little difficult to do all three of these items at one time. Whereas we have a, you know, if we're going to change our municipal code, that's one thing. If we want to have a development agreement, that's okay. And then, you know, finally, we come back and we have our conditional use permit. But we haven't determined whether the first two have passed the mustard with the council.
Exactly, and that's why your, that's why the recommendation is that your approval be conditioned on the council's final action on the ordinance. And the DA, if the council, for some, for whatever reason, does not approve either the ordinance or the development agreement, then your approval of the conditional use permit is void.
But if they were to, if they were to make changes, some changes to it, or maybe no changes, I mean, I just wonder why we want to do, if we're in a hurry to get all three done, or we try to do it like we used to do, where you, you kind of take it a progressive step at a time?
Well, I think Mr. Tilly's made the point that this is not a unique process, this is a process that you have used on many occasions, most typically in the context of a subdivision, where you've been asked to approve a subdivision, a tentative map for a subdivision, pending or conditioned on the council's ultimate action on, in some cases, a general plan amendment or a rezone. And so in that sense, it's a very similar situation. Technically, when you're approving that map, you're not approving a map that's consistent with zoning and general plan. And so the, so the approval is made conditioned on the council's final action. So while you haven't had to deal with this particular situation, obviously, this is not a unique situation to find the planning commission in.
Thank you, Jeff.
And as for the two and a half percent, your guess is as good as ours, but I think we'll let the council decide whether that's a, that's an adequate number or not.
Well, if they, if they ask my opinion, I was voting for ten, and they can do what they want.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure to pass that piece.
Thank you.
So, I'm hoping we can switch gears a little bit. Your presentation was brief, which I know we often appreciate, but I think I would like to hear a little bit more about your business, your business model, your history, and what the path forward as far as your business plan looks like, in terms of the distribution world, recognizing that this is a new category of business and a new market of business. So if you could share some just general details on those items, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. You know, this, this, this industry, medicinal cannabis, has been going on for twenty years. This is nothing new. When you say, you know, what we're trying to do, it's frankly, what we're trying to do is nothing new, except for we're trying to do it better. We're trying to refine it and prepare for the future in two thousand eighteen under new laws of California. So we're, so we're really doing kind of more than, oh, yes, of course. Thank you. We're really doing, you know, essentially more than is needed just to function in the industry. Things like our secure vehicles with GPS lock and anti-theft and safes and, you know, enclosed, you know, welded doors and all these things, that's one example of some of the securities we're taking. The pack, dealing in packaged product, where this is product that is branded, logo-tested for safety on many fronts, we retest it again, or will, and again, comes in prepackaged, you know, non-tampered packaging. The theory or the idea behind all this, and frankly, reality, is delivering a safe product to patients in the state of California, again, which has been going on for twenty years in medicinal cannabis. We're just, we're looking to, to do it right now, so there's, it's not necessarily that there's a rush, it's that we have a very good business model to make sure that that's done right, again, through testing and secure delivery and locked and secure product and storable to keep, maintain quality, but for the future, in two thousand eighteen, you know, ramping up now. And so we're really kind of almost ahead of time, but putting in those securities. We could frankly go about business without a lot of the things that we've already done and investments we've made, but we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. And a lot of that, you asked about history and, and experience, I mean, mine personally is in another industry, twenty-seven years liquor and wine. I, I actually ran the branch in West Sacramento of a big distribution company that's been around here for years. I opened up their new building off of industrial in two thousand eleven. So, so we kind of picked West Sacramento because I knew, we knew how Sacramento, West Sacramento is, and we wanted to be a part of it. Any other, any specific questions?
Well, I appreciate your comments, but I don't think that's where I was going with the question, so maybe I'll, I'll ask some more pointed questions to help get where I'm hoping to go. Can you tell me a little bit more about your, your business type, and specifically your, your business model?
Absolutely.
And the third question to keep things moving, do you have, do you currently have clients or agreements with clients to start moving product as soon as this facility's up and running? What is, what is the status?
Or cultivators?
Or cultivators, thank you.
Yes, we, well, we don't, you know, and Lauren covered this, we're not... Yes, we, well, we don't, you know, and Lauren covered this, we're not looking to, we don't sell to the public, um, we don't manufacture, we don't grow.
I understand that, but you do have, or, you know, you do have dispensaries that you'll be selling, distributing your product to. So, do you have dispensaries that you're currently doing business with or have signed agreements with you to do business with?
Yes.
And you have cultivators that you've already signed agreements with to purchase product from?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
And so-
For the, again, ramping up for the future.
And, and what is the future date? I mean, when, when are you hoping to actually start distributing products?
We're hoping to be licensed and permitted in West Sacramento as soon as possible.
So, uh, garnering approv-, uh, uh, approval and improvements to your property, you would be ready to start moving product from both ends immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, uh, hours of operation, if you have you guys-
For the warehouse itself?
Yep, for the warehouse itself.
I, I think it's a six to, uh, you know, five o'clock or, or, you know, we haven't, I don't think we've nailed down those hours, but normal warehousing hours are, you know, seven to, to six or something.
So, it wouldn't be a twenty-four or seven operation as far as product coming in and coming out?
No.
Would you be uncomfortable with having a condition in, in the conditions that, that specified that?
That, that's, no.
Okay. Can you tell me a little bit about how you're financed, and if you're bankable? Because I know that's a huge challenge for the industry.
Yeah, that's a, that's more of a, that's a Lauren question.
The owners of the comp-, so it's privately owned, there's a, um, two primary owners and some, and a friend slash investor partner in that, so-
Through an LLC, or?
Yes, there's an LLC, and then there's all, there's also the Not-for-Profit Mutual Benefit Corporation, which is what allows us to operate in the existing marketplace under the Compassionate Use Act of nineteen ninety-six. So, that's a, a structure that allows us to work directly with collectives, um, that it's the-
So, can I ask, how will you be receiving payment and distributing payment to the cultivators when you're buying and the, and the dispensaries when you're distributing?
Uh, right now, the industry is largely cash, cash-based, so there is a, a security component of securing both the product and the cash. Uh, in most cases, dispensaries pay for product in cash, and, uh, that cash can be utilized to pay suppliers.
And, uh, will you, do you have a CPA firm or someone that does your accounting?
Yes.
And can count on the cash transactions being, uh, confirmed?
Very much so, mm-hmm. In fact, uh, one of our owners is the, the, what, partner of the fifth largest accounting firm in California.
Okay. I'm not, I, I don't know if that helped me, but I appreciate you sharing it. Um, so, uh, you've, you've been in the wine and liquor industry, warehousing industry, you understand that as products move through the warehouse, sometimes they break. Um, one of my concern is, uh, damaged goods, because it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and you know this from being in that industry, regardless of how well they're protected. So, my question is, you, for you, next would be, what is the process for dealing with breakage of this substance should that, and when that happen? What are the protocols? How do we handle it? How do we make sure it doesn't end up in our waste stream and our landfill?
Sure, we, we, um, I, I mean, when break, it's not, I mean, break, it's in, there's not glass containers, but, but I understand what you're saying, if something ripped open, um-
You got, I'm, I'm-
We would, we would contain, we would contain-
I've been enough warehouses, even the nicest things that are most protected will find a way to find a razor blade, right?
Absolutely. Um, we would, we would contain that in, in these, in sealed barrels and secured barrels, and we would, um, we, we would work with a third party to, when it gets to a certain level, to pick up that waste and, and dispose of it.
Uh, i- is it considered pharmaceutical waste?
No.
As being used for medicinal purpose?
It's not agricultural.
It's agricultural waste? Oh, so there's really not a regu-, a lot of the regulation on how you would actually dispose it?
No, but I think just part of our securities and things we're trying to do, it's, you know, it's the right thing to do.
I guess the only thing I, I would ask you to comment on, and it's because I read your biographies and I saw how engaged, uh, several of you were in the, the policymaking that took place last year, is, um, it, it seems like that we have a timeframe between now and two thousand eighteen, where, uh, regulations will be adopted for all these licensing standards at the state level. And, uh, there's gonna be kind of a grace period, for lack of a better term, for, uh, the industry to move to this model of vertical integration. So, I'm having a hard time understanding, and, and I'm hoping you can help me with this, is if I'm a, a cultivator, or if I'm, uh, a dispensary, what is the benefit of me moving to the distribution model before I absolutely have to?
Well, it-
Because I realize, it's cutting in my profit cost if I'm on either one of those sides, because I realize I'm paying for, for the service of the intermediary. So, before two thousand eighteen plus, where I actually have to do those things, what is, what is the motivation for me to do that now?
Sales. I mean, it's, it's, um, again, in brand building. So, you have, if you're currently doing that, or you're a dispensary, or you're a grower, you're probably in an isolated, uh, small footprint in California. Um, with, with us, I mean, you would have distribution throughout the state of California. It would be, again, secured, it would be, it would be, uh, professional, it would be safe, it would be tested, um, you know, and, and if, if I was a grower concerned with building my, a brand, then that's what I would want.
Uh, so, five-year plan, do you imagine that the, the growth in sales significant? Uh, I mean, what do you, what are you guys envisioning for your business plan?
We hope, we hope so, yeah, absolutely.
And is this, I mean, what it, what is the capacity of the space that you're looking for this permit on? You know, what, how much could you turn around, and how often would that inventory turn around in best-case scenario?
It's, it's actually, the, the footprint of the building is, is, um, is, is, is larger, call it on paper, than, than the footprint that will be used. I mean, it's a, it's an in-and-out, this is a, this warehouse, this facility would be an in-and-out facility. Products coming in, quickly going out, and that's it. It's, it's not a long-term storage or massive storage facility.
I think that's all, that's all the questions I have for now. Thanks for, uh, being patient with me, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And so, yes, thank you, thank you for being patient with, uh, with me and my colleagues, both of the applicant and to the staff. And normally, the planning commission's role is really about land use and land use-related topics, but I do think that because we're kind of, you know, the last bastion before the sit to city council, I do think that the questions that we're bringing up implicitly, you know, I, I think that there's an implicit understanding that we, as a planning commission, need to play an additional vetting role in some areas that extend beyond land use. So, again, thank you for, for taking the time and consider this, your-
No problem, thank you.
-your dress rehearsal for city council. So, um, I'm actually very excited about the prospect of, of, um, of moving forward with staff recommendation on this item for a couple of reasons. The biggest is, I think that our city really likes to pride ourselves on being incredibly progressive. That being said, I think that we all also have to balance out with being conservative in a number of ways, including, you know, fiscally conservative and conservative in a policy fashion. The council has come forward, um, very clearly not wanting to allow cultivation or distribution, I mean, just, this, whatever the verb of dispensary is, um, in our city. This is something in between, and it is different, and I think that, I want to commend staff for both the terms set forth in the ordinance, and particularly the development agreement. I think that it's about as, from, from the city's perspective, I think that the development agreement is about as airtight as, as I would like to see it. So, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with, with the terms that are spelled out there. Um, so, I, I brought up my question earlier for, to confirm, um, I do have concerns that the M-one zoning is scattered throughout our city, and there's a lot of areas where I would be comfortable with your type of facility, and areas that I would not be comfortable with your type of facility, if for no other reason that some of those areas have not been fully built out. Those are the areas I'm a little more concerned about, because I, I don't want, um, this particular use to dissuade other uses from, from being in that area in, in a similar location. So, that being said, the staff confirmation that a conditional use permit for an additional facility would still require a governing board approval, not just something that's administrative. And, and I do also want to be really cognizant of the fact that we're, we're seeking to set precedent, not just as a city, but also for, for your company as well. I mean, you know, not just a precedent, but what's gonna hopefully carry forward for the next couple of years. So, I, I do want to be very conscientious as we move forward. That being said, I, again, I am comfortable with staff recommendation, although I will say that I, I do echo, um, Commissioner Moore's concerns, I would like to see this kind of phased. Um, I would like to entertain a zoning change before entertaining a development agreement, but I'm not opposed to doing both tonight. So, those are, that's, that's basically my, my feedback at this point. Um, I do want to add on, now, that's my feedback, but I'd like to ask questions, add on to, Commissioner Sturmfeld's questions and concerns. I do, I would like to know a little bit more about kind of the geographic radius of where your cul-, where your cultivators and your distributors, are we talking Northern California? Are we talking Sacramento region? I, I am actually very curious about kind of the geographies, and then if you have a sense of the numbers, like you're thinking maybe one grower, but, you know, three hundred dispensaries? I, I don't know if you have a sense of kind of the, the scale and geography?
Well, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm struggling with the answer, just because we have, I mean, when, when you say growers, um, there is, you know, as we're trying to represent products, there's, there could be many growers, it's, it's, I, and some of them are, sometimes fall under an umbrella of a, of a larger, call it, you know, company. Um, we're just, we would have enough to fill the gaps, you know, needed of, of, of different products and, and, you know, strains to, um, to represent. So, I, I wouldn't have a number, not, I mean-
You, I'm sure that you're in discussions, though, like, are you thinking, you know, oh, we have some growers identified in the Sacramento region, or, you know, just Mendocino County, if as an example?
I would say roughly, I would say roughly ten groups of, you know, of growers.
Okay, and then this, the number of dispensaries, and then is it Sacramento, Bay Area, everything north of Fresno, I don't know?
Furthest West Sacramento location would be the Valley.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate all of my commissioners, you have a question, go ahead.
And since we're, we're, the other commissioners were, were trying to get into more of the business logistics, I was just curious, um, how many, I'm not sure if you have an exact number, because I understand it's a growing business and supply and demand, but, um, how many employees are you, um, do you anticipate having, or do you, you know, that's where you're sort of the types of jobs? I understand businesses are a lot.
Yeah, and it, it's similar to the, the answer on the, the volume, I mean, it's hopefully a lot. To start out, I mean, I think in, in this location, you know, seven to ten people, uh, quickly, and then growing over, you know, in eighteen months to fifteen to eighteen, or fifteen to twenty. Um, and, and then depending on volume, it, it goes from there, but the type of people are, would be delivery drivers and, um, and warehouse people, um, and office staff, and we're, we're, we're in negotiations with the Teamsters, with the union.
And just to follow, do you, I understand that you're already, you already have a business, do you already have employees?
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, you just now hinted at, you, you referred to this as a West Sacramento location, so this is the Valley area, do you have other locations?
No, we-
Or are you anticipating on having others?
Um, yes, possibly, I mean, throughout, you know, card eventually throughout California, but this would be, this would be our, our major location.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great. Of course, Commissioner Moore, you may ask one more question.
If all of your transactions are gonna be cash, cash, and not a check, and we're dealing with everything going on, are we doing background checks? How do you, how do you do your drivers and stuff that are gonna touch this all day long?
Well, and we, and we do do that, and, and eventually, if, depending, you know, as I said, we're in negotiation with the Teamsters and the union, so, um, they, you know, they have, they would have guidelines as well, but, yeah, drivers would be union and follow guidelines, um, same with, with backgrounds and testing and everything.
I, I just, I was curious, I, I have a trucking company, so I was curious what you guys were thinking, but my guys didn't touch money and stuff, you know, so, okay.
Yeah, I mean, these, these vehicles that are secure, the same way for delivering the product is, is just as secure on returning the, the payment.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I just wanna mention that my commissioners did an excellent job in, you know, really, um, vetting this thoroughly and, um, you know, bringing to, to mind some concerns that, you know, we have, or some thoughts we wanted to bring out a little more openly, and, um, you know, this is a, a pretty big decision based on our history and our experience, and knowing that we have, um, uh, um, Lauren, you've had some experience working on the legislation, and, um, we've, I think, come a long way since, um, we initially started. And, uh, I just wanted to see if you can speak a little bit more about that, um, you know, where we were before, where we are now, and, you know, what you think could happen in the future, um, as far as any legislative changes, any ballot initiatives that could possibly impact where we, um, where this is going?
Certainly. And my experience, uh, with the Medical Marijuana Regulation Safety Act was really indirectly as a stakeholder. So, throughout the process, from about May to October, when the governor signed the, the act, uh, it was spending two to three days a week at the state capitol, sitting in stakeholder meetings, sitting down with, um, assembly members and senators, talking to them about, um, the, the benefits of implementing a regulatory scheme. One of those, uh, benefits is that we do see, um, that there will be an initiative for legalization on the ballot in November two thousand, two thousand sixteen. So, with that in mind, um, it was, I think, imperative to the state to first implement a regulatory system for the existing market that we have for medical before introducing an entirely new market that may or may not parallel with, uh, what we have in place. So, uh, my experience and kind of just foresight is, uh, I think that the stakeholders, both, um, the regulatory agencies, the legislators, uh, law enforcement, local governments, I think there was a great balance in negotiation that arrived to the MMRSI. I think that they arrived at something that addresses the concerns and the interests of both industry and, uh, regulators and, and agencies involved. So, um, we are happy to see where things landed, we feel that it's going to provide the, and address the issues of public safety and non-diversion and tax collection, if, if an excise tax is imposed, and some of the other environmental impacts and, and things that were a primary objective of, of, uh, passing this legislation now. As to where it will go, um, the initiative will be on the ballot, we are seeing, we're seeing kind of even support amongst the industry, uh, some fifty percent in support and fifty percent, um, opposed, so, and some neutral. So, it's, um, it's hard to say where it will go, but we think that with the system that's in place with the MMRSI, hopefully, any legalization effort would simply build upon that regulation as opposed to coincide or, or conflict with it.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. And, um, like my fellow commissioner, Austin, I also appreciate, um, the, the staff report and all the background, um, that we have, I think it was a, a pretty thorough job. Um, the development agreement, um, is, is, uh, is, as Commissioner Austin said, is airtight. I, um, appreciate all that you've done, all the contingencies and things like that, just to make sure that if things, something doesn't move forward, you know, even our CUP approval tonight, um, you know, would, would, um, not move forward as well, and that's, you know, I think one of, um, one of the areas that, um, you know, if we, or if there's a need for it to return back for any amendments, um, if there is, uh, um, some changes that we need to make, you know, can you speak a little bit to that, um, as well? And, and how would you be willing to agree to work on that in the future?
We, well, we, we agree to the processes of the city, I mean-
You do, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we, and I, I appreciate your business, I can't speak. Everybody else, yeah. I can only speak myself here, but I appreciate your business, um, in our city, I appreciate, I wanted to make sure I don't know where anybody else is at. And, uh, you know-
Sharon, do you mind if I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
I appreciate, um, the fact that you brought up the initiatives, because I think it was, um, something that I obviously took a look at, uh, in preparing for this meeting. I'm interested in knowing from your business plan perspective, should a, a legalization for recreational use pass on the November ballot, is that, is your business model accounting for that? Are you planning on changing your business model to allow for recreational distribution also? And will we see you back, uh, in January of two thousand eighteen asking for that change? Uh, or are you strictly focused on servicing the medical marijuana industry with this facility?
I believe the development agreement and the conditional use permit are actually worded in a way that addresses legal cannabis distribution as opposed to addressing specifically medical.
I, occur, is it?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So, the intent would be that should legalization occur, we would like to be able to participate in that industry to the extent that it fits our business model at the time. We, we're set up to, to accommodate for that, um, but it will really depend on if that initiative passes and what, what changes may or may not be made to it between now and then, that would put our business model in, in place with it.
So, uh, let me just make this clear, and maybe staff, you can weigh in, should, should a, a recreational initiative, use initiative pass in November, uh, this applicant or any others coming before us would, would be considered for, or this, this applicant would be able to transition into recreational distribution as well?
Um, the way the definition is currently, um, proposed, it does specifically reference medical cannabis.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
Right. The intention of the way we put this together is that the development agreement would encompass anything that the zoning code allows, and so what would need to happen would be a change to the zoning code. If a change to the zoning code was made following the approval of a ballot measure that legalized recreational use, then the development agreement would simply pick up that same change.
So for the applicant, I want to make sure that you all are clear that the definition for cannabis distribution facilities specifies for medical cannabis products only currently, right?
Now I understand. Yeah. When we had first looked at the, I think, the development agreement, we were looking at legal cannabis, but I don't know if I looked at the zoning amendment, so that may be the discrepancy.
But, but your intention would be should legalization for recreational use take place, that you would be interested in expanding your business model to recreational use distribution as well? Is that correct?
Yes.
Most likely.
Thank you.
Mr. Tilly, did you want to say something?
I just want to make sure we take public comment tonight.
Oh, yes. We will. We will eventually take public comment tonight. Are we all done at this point?
Well, for now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, if you could just sit near close by, because we'll bring you back up. And I have one request to speak, Madam Clerk. I don't, I have Dan Ramos, if he can come on up and-
Good evening, Chairman Guerrero and members of the Planning Commission. Good to see you. I've been here a long time, so it's good to see all you. Charlie, I'm going to surprise you tonight, because we, I'm here representing Ramco LLC, which is the property owner next door to the west. We own the building next door. And want to let you know, we're very, we're supportive of this use going into the building next door, and we're very familiar with their operation. We've had a chance to meet with them, understand what they're doing. We see this as another economic development opportunity for the city of West Sacramento, but also what it brings to us personally, close by there, is we, we like this enhanced security that this use will bring to our area. We really do. It's been a tough area to own and manage a building with a lot of the issues we've had, and we can ask the police that are here tonight about this. I think this will really, really help this particular area in Evergreen in terms of the enhanced security that we'll see there. I'm sure there's a, going to be a great relationship between this use and our police department in how they're going to do that. They can't disclose everything to us tonight, obviously, that's, that would be not the right thing to do, but we're very supportive. We understand this is, and this is like, like a liquor distributor. That's what they do. So it's not, the public's not coming there, they're not growing there. So we very, really support this. We think this is a use that is compatible, and it's a little forward-thinking for West Sacramento, opportunity to generate some revenue, hopefully enhance some police services around, also, also provide an economic opportunity for some of our other businesses in West Sacramento. Distribution companies do real well here. It's a great location, it's a real access, but we have a lot of support industries. I own NorCal, servicing their equipment, you know, Kirby, Pacific Tire, Radio Tire, Rizal and Tyres, it's all right there. So it really supports, we have infrastructure support in these kind of industries. So just wanted to know, we checked it out, believe you, this is not something we take lightly, but we think the enhanced security model is an excellent opportunity for us to actually solve some problems in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? All right. Thank you. I wanted to keep the, this part of the hearing open for comments from our representatives from our fire department and police department. One question was asked about if it was opened up, you know, I don't think that anything could happen for toxins or anything in our community, but I really do want to hear from you about your thoughts about that, and if the fire department has any, any concerns or, you know, how it could be addressed, and from the police department, any security issues and how you would work with the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Brian Johnson, Fire Marshal, for the record. We've looked at the proposal, obviously, and we don't find an unusual risk with the use as we see it. We would ask, and I think I speak on behalf of the building as well, that we require them to build or modify to the minimum code standards, as we would expect of anybody else.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name's Nathan Steele, I'm a lieutenant with the West Sacramento Police Department. We have reviewed the proposed plans under both the SEPTED crime prevention through environmental design plan, which we normally do for proposed developments, as well as a security assessment of the facility. We think that based upon the initial review of the plans we've been given and the intention to review as we move forward, that they meet our concerns and recommendations at this point in time.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commissioners about public safety issues or?
No, I, again, I, I didn't think about my question when I asked about the security thing, that maybe, even I don't want to know all the security that's going to go into it, but I was just kind of concerned more that somebody's going to review it thoroughly, because I, I just envisioned something in, you know, very severe over in that area to protect the area. And, you know, I mean, even Mr. Ramos talked about that area is not, has known to have a little crime once in a while, and I'm sure you can vouch for that. I'm just trying to figure out that somebody is going to review it, look at it, and try to make it as safe as we can for our city.
Absolutely. The reality matter is, we look at this like we would a pharmaceutical company, or a company that's dealing with any commodity that's worth a lot of money. That's the way that we're looking at it from that perspective. We don't make guidelines, we don't demand things from a police department perspective that would, that would incur liability for the city that we're not looking to take on. We, we look and review plans and make suggestions, and that is something we have done with this.
Yeah. And that's really what I was thinking, is not that you're going to tell them exactly what to do, but if you see a little void in the thing, you could help them and say, hey, what about this? I mean, I, I looked at the one that they had a door that was going, instead of outside as an exit door, it's going next door to the building next door. I mean, I don't know how that gets secure, but kind of the effort-
We have reviewed the plans, and of course, the safety protocols are some of them we don't necessarily want to discriminate-
Don't tell me. I don't want to know.
But we have reviewed those plans, and we have made suggestions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, and as you mentioned, the pharmaceutical companies, and I think at this point we can close the public hearing. I think we don't have any more questions for the applicant or anybody else. Okay. Close the public hearing. Back to discussion among the commissioners. I have been aware that even with the pharmaceutical, the pharmacies, you know, there are on occasion robberies and things like that for narcotics, and just the safety precautions are not, you know, as strict there, and there's no security guard even at the door, is what I'm hearing about that's going to happen, you know, with this distribution. And so, you know, I feel pretty comfortable with what I've heard, and even just reading the staff report. So just thinking about that a little more, just wanted to put it out there. Any questions at this point in time from the commissioners to the staff?
Just a couple. Thank you. I also want to thank staff for a very complete report. It was very much appreciated. You didn't leave a whole lot for me to actually question. That said, I do have a couple, and then what possible proposed change to some language based on some, some questions and answers that came up. Regarding the, the distribution, there will be no sales to, to public. I want to just confirm that they cannot form a club, for example, and do sales as a club, which would be similar to what dispensaries would be. I think the way we've, the intent of what we drafted was to describe them as filling the role solely as the middleman in transporting product from cultivation and manufacturing to dispensaries. Under the, under the current state licensing scheme, the only role they can play is that transportation role. It requires, it will require a different state license to be a dispensary, and a different state license to be a cultivator, and state, and the state law, the MMRSi, yes, prohibits one entity from holding dispensing licenses at the same time they're a transporter or a cultivator. So that's our intention and our understanding of their business model. I think it is described also in one of the, in the exhibit to the development agreement that sort of lays out in a little more layman's language what we see as the, the model of how they're going to operate. Thank you. Yeah, no, it is laid out in a few places. It's just that the definitions, you know, I want to make sure that this one is driven by state law, though, that would prohibit dispensing, period, rather, regardless of if it's public or private, say, to a club. So thank you for that clarification. David, the, what, without going into the details, what is the timing for the crime prevention through environmental design or CPED report?
We have received a SEPTED report, and there's the additional safety and security plan that will be developed and need to be operate, be in place, you know, before they begin operations, and it's specified, I believe, with section nine in the development agreement.
Okay. I think that those were my only questions. That said, getting to the possible language change, Andrew brought up some questions regarding the terms legal versus medical, and the definitions include medical, but if the state is looking to possibly legalize recreational use, that means this would have to come back to us relatively soon. Do we want to entertain the possibility of striking the terms medical, replacing them with the term legal now? And then the second part of that is, as we reference the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, do we want to strike that and replace that with terms such as state law? My suggestion is that we keep it the way we've got it, and the thinking from my perspective on this is, first of all, right now, the only thing that is legal is medical marijuana. And while I'm comfortable having a development agreement that anticipates the possibility that that would change, I am not as comfortable having the city adopt an ordinance that allows the distribution of a product which is not legal under state law currently. The other piece is that, and what ultimately comes out of a ballot measure is still an unknown, but currently, the MMRSi retains local control and gives you a significant amount of discretion on what you allow. In light of that, I would rather the city have the conversation when state law changes about whether, assuming we still have local control, about whether the city is prepared as a city to allow, to the expansion of the distribution to include recreational. And I, I think the thinking from my perspective on this is the distribution element is probably the most benign element of the whole chain in terms of the impacts that people have identified, the, you know, impacts coming from cultivation, the impacts coming from dispensing. But I think it would be prudent to preserve the city's discretion to evaluate that when we see what changes in state law occur. Okay. Thank you. I'm not going to argue with the city attorney. Regarding one of the other proposals to split this up or possibly phase the vote, I too had originally had that notion as, you know, why are we taking this all at one time? But it is not unprecedented. We have done it before, and in this case, I'm ready to move forward, all three. So we can separate them or vote them together, but that's where I stand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So I have a different perspective, and I think part of it is probably because, like a few others on this commission, I'm fairly new to this commission, and haven't, was not around when some of the previous discussions took place, but I think there, there's a policy shift happening right now, and these three bills that were passed and signed by the governor last year are the beginning of that policy shift. We have an initiative which could significantly change the way California views this product and regulates it, or several initiatives, I should say. I think there's more than one qualified at this point, and several others that are still out there. And then we also have a presidential election, which could also change the federal role and view of how this product should be managed and the legality of it, frankly. And so, to me, that leaves a lot of uncertainty, which I recognize is not in the purview of the decision we're making tonight. However, because of that, I think that the council deserves to have a very robust conversation about, given all of the policy changes that have taken place in the last year, and the ones that we know coming down the pike, are we still in the same place we were last time we had that conversation? And so, from my end, I'm, I'm completely comfortable moving forward on, on the development agreement and the municipal code change, but I really think it's prudent for us not to get ahead of the council on having that conversation first before we're bringing, before we're approving a conditional use permit that, that essentially says we're okay with it, even though you guys haven't talked about it and confirmed that from a policy direction, you're okay with it. And so for me, I'm very apprehensive on doing that. Has absolutely nothing to do with the project itself, has more to do with following the order of operations of government, in my opinion, and making sure that we actually have the policy discussion at the council level where it belongs, and make a policy decision before we then come back and make policy action and implementation on a, on a physical project. However, I recognize that some of my commissioners feel differently, and so if that is the case, that we move in a different direction as a commission tonight, I, A, I can't support that other direction, but B, if we do, I would ask that you still consider some of these other concerns that I've brought up tonight. Two in particular that I think need to be in the conditions, the first being some kind of timeframe on hours of operation, so that we don't have late night transport at a time I think you may have higher crime and higher risk. I think it should, you know, if, if we're, if the state's moving in a direction managing this like alcohol, we should probably consider managing it like alcohol, which means there's certain hours of operation. And on the retail side, so maybe on the distribution side, that makes sense, too. I don't know. Maybe it does or doesn't. The other thing that I have concern on, and I don't know if we can address this in a condition or not, is the waste piece, and what happens if, with, I know it's not classified as medical waste or pharmaceutical waste, but CDFA, part of their charges, these bills, is to come up with a regulation on how to manage some of these things. And I think one of them that's going to be a hot button topic is, how do we deal with waste streams from this, from this industry? And so I think that there are several risks we're entering into from a policy side by moving forward with this, before the state set all the rules, the road for these industries, particularly the newest of them. But one of them, to me, that's concerning is waste and stream, because I don't, personally don't want these products, whether biodegradable or not, ending up in waste streams, for example, or wastewater, you know, or trash in landfills, if that's not the appropriate place for them to be. And I'm not technical enough to know, but I think it's a concern that is unresolved. There's no state policy guidance on it at this point in time, because it's being developed, and we have to be thoughtful about in developing this condition. So whether it's having a condition around making sure we have a copy of the contract of whoever the third party person is who is collecting it and moving it, how often it's leaving the facility, and where it's going, if it's staying in, in the city limits or somewhere else, I think those are things that we should consider including. But as a total policy, let me go back to my first point, is I think we need to hold off on the CUP until the council makes a decision. We've heard from them that, yes, while they have business up and running, this isn't a huge rush, so I don't understand the rush from city side on wanting to push this through at the same time. I think giving the council at their next meeting, which is coming up soon, or following one, the discretion to have that policy conversation. We're meeting every two weeks at this point, so let's bring it back and finish this thing up. But do it the right way, do it in a way that respects the council's discretion and having a policy conversation about the merits of making this change to the municipal code and the development agreement. So with that, that was, and one more thing, I'm sorry. Commissioner Leving mentioned that the staff report was fantastic, and that left him with very few questions. I also think the staff report was fantastic, but it left me with a ton of questions. And so I want to thank staff for really going above and beyond and answering all of them. I think I spent more time on the phone with them than I did on the phone with anyone else this week, and I appreciate you taking the time to thoroughly review and be considerate of my questions along the way. With that, I yield.
Would the staff like to answer any questions, or the city attorney have any response to the comments made at this point before we move forward, and any other commissions in discussion?
I have a possible, possible recommendation for how we could address Commissioner Ansturn's recommendations.
Sure. I'd first like to hear something back before I move forward on recommendations.
We certainly can assist the Planning Commission with any motions or procedural steps on how to proceed in light of some of the comments we've heard tonight. You know, we've, we've lined item now each of the recommended actions, you know, for you tonight, you know, in the staff report, and those could be considered individually or, or as a group. It's, we're prepared to assist you with any, any motion that you wish to make.
I think there was one- I think there was one on the, on the hours of operation, and I, and I think that there are some businesses that have a 24-hour operation, and there, I think the recommendation is to have business hours set, and making an amendment to have business hours set. Is that a recommendation you were proposing?
I think for a, a transport industry of this type, I think it's, it's prudent to have some, some parameters around when trucks will be coming in and out of that area.
And I didn't hear the applicant raise any concerns about that particular issue when, when asked. Did you have any suggestions on hours, or?
I would leave that to that, to the applicant's discretion, but I think daylight hours makes, makes sense from a public safety standpoint.
Could, could we kick this to the, the safety plan, to actually come up with hours, to have recommended hours?
And keep it open?
So, I, I would further ask that before we go any further in discussing this issue, that we discuss the broader contention of whether or not we're going to make, have action on the conditional use permit tonight. Because if we're not, we're buying ourselves time to figure this, this issue out. If, if the intention of the rest of my commissioners is to move forward on that item tonight, then I think that we should, we should come to conclusion on that first, so that then we can know what direction we need to go.
I, I feel comfortable taking action with the conditional use permit tonight, and, you know, maybe we could just do a quick straw poll before we, you know, just, I feel comfortable moving this all forward, because I, I get a sense that if there's any question or, or there could be an appeal, it could come right back. I mean, this, this is, this is subject to an appeal and could come right back to us, or handled at the level of the city council.
Marty, could I say a couple of things before we move forward with this? I actually am whittling myself down to a lot less questions for everybody. But one, and one of them that still was important, and I think it was Bernadette said something about where we can have these things in an M1 zone, and how expansive it is on the map now. And a recommendation that I would be making to council as they try to condense that a little bit to where we can better service them. So, you know, if we need police protection because of stuff going on, it's easy to get to. Some of these are at the very extremities of our city. Maybe we can't do that, but maybe we can. So, if we could, I'd like to at least see them take a second look at where they're allowing the, the centers to go, because I thought that was rather important. I already forgot my other one. I had, only had two.
Oh, my goodness.
But I, I, I have to say that I, I kind of agree with Andrew. I, I really would like to see us do two and then come back. And the reason is, if council makes any dramatic changes, then we know what we're looking at when we go for a conditional use permit. And they may do nothing. And then it's just, okay, we approve the conditional use permit. But rather than send something off that you don't know what they're going to give you back, it would make more sense to do it systematically, to me.
Okay.
Oh, and if they want, I'm still not convinced this is for our staff. I'm still not convinced that we're getting enough money for this. And I don't know how we do it, but I think we should at least try to find out where else it's done, or what other states and what they do. And if they get a lot less, don't tell anybody. But if they don't, then we could at least talk about it.
The, the only comment I have to, to splitting it, and, and I, I could go both ways, but keeping it together gives the council the actual benefit of seeing the entire package, so seeing the actual project along with the, the zoning that is kind of driving it. That's the, that's the one drawback that I see of actually splitting it.
So, but council wouldn't see the permit, because we, we're the discretionary body that's making that decision?
True. They wouldn't, they wouldn't actually see the, the project.
Correct. Regardless, if we, if we approved it, they're, they're only seeing the development agreement and the municipal code change. Those are the two items that we're recommending that move forward to them. The CUP is solely within our jurisdiction.
Would the CUP be pulled out of the description for them?
Well, the, the, it is correct that, you know, a use permit would typically be adjudicated by the commission, although it's, it's possible on a, under an appeal scenario that it could be, it could become onto the city council's agenda via that mechanism.
Okay.
So, my point is, I actually think we're making a statement to the council by approving it, and in knowing that it doesn't go to them, and they do not have a secondary review on it, before they've had a chance to have a policy conversation.
Okay.
And then, so that's where, that's where I'm stuck.
I will, I will agree with you on that one.
Thank you.
And just to add one additional piece to this, certainly, we're talking about kind of council's purview, but I do think that having a, a second opportunity for the public to weigh in on this is really significant. I mean, to be, to be perfectly honest, people who may have very strong feelings one way or another may not be aware of our planning commission, but they're probably going to pay a little more attention to the city council. So, I mean, yeah, I, I totally agree with Commissioner Leibig. I could approve everything tonight, but I do see some merit in, in Commissioner Sternfeld's alternative recommendation. So, I don't, I don't know, with, with, with that, should I?
We can, I think, Commissioner Leibig, you recommended taking them each item separately, and that could be a way we...
We may have a suggestion on how to address the conditional use permit piece. The concern I have with continuing the conditional use permit indefinitely is you'll be asking the council to act on a development agreement, but, but under the terms of the ordinance, you need both the CUP and the DA. So, will we have the plant, will we have the city council approve a development agreement that is conditional on the issuance of a conditional use permit? That seems backwards to me. So, one possibility would be to continue the planning commission's consideration of the use permit until perhaps the meeting after the first reading on the ordinances by the council. At that point, you'll have a read from the council as to where they want to go on the zoning change and on the DA. And as you, as has been pointed out, if, if they have some serious reservations about it, they may want to refer the whole thing back to the planning commission. And you would know then on the, I think the council's meeting is the 6th of April. And typically, after first reading, there's not any real changes. In fact, by state law, you can't change the ordinance after first reading. And if there were significant, significant changes made at the second reading, it would have to be back to the council for, for full review. So, I think you would have a pretty good idea where the council wants to go on April 7th.
I think that's totally reasonable.
Jeff, just for clarification, if we wanted to continue the CUP, then you're also recommending that we continue the proposed development agreement?
No. I would recommend that you pour those onto the council with a recommend, with your recommendation, approval, or denial. And then those would go to the council on April 6th.
Okay.
Council would have its first reading and public hearing on the 6th, at which point you would have some signi-, you'd have the feedback that I think you're looking for from the council on whether they're comfortable with the approach that's being done. You could, you could also, as part of that, if you wanted to, indicate any concerns that you have with the terms of the use permit, or that you don't have concerns about the use permit. Or you could even ask staff to include in the report that you would, you're specifically looking for feedback on hours of operation and the waste stream. I mean, I'm not suggesting that you do that, but that's, you could make that part of your, part of your approval, of your recommendation on the zoning change and the DA.
But if you are looking to, thinking about making a decision on the, the conditional use permit tonight, the applicant has indicated that in terms of limits on hours of operation, that doing something consistent with current alcohol distribution from, limiting from eight, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, would be something that would work for their operations. And as far as waste stream, that they'd be willing to contract, even though it's not, wouldn't be required for this type of product, contract with a medical waste facility for disposal, or go through a licensed pickup for waste incineration.
Okay. And, and I, and I also appreciate Commissioner Sternfeld's interest to vet this thoroughly with the city council, you know, first, and, you know, see where they're at. I think in my experience, here as a commissioner, but also as commissioner, you know, with, you know, in my prior years from other commissions, and living here in West Sacramento, I, I think we've had some good idea as to how they feel about this particular product. And, and we also have a lot of other businesses where I think I understood in the beginning of the discussion that we take this as a package. This isn't an unusual experience here. And so, you know, I just wanted to, you know, just remind the commissioners that, you know, this, this is not unique, that we have done this before.
Well, I, I, I disagree just slightly, because I agree that we have done this before in terms of sending multiple items to the commission. We have not done it before with a topic that is still under legal review, does not have a regulatory framework around it, has more questions than answers, and several more questions, both on the ballot and with an election coming up, that are left unanswered. And so, I think the, the additional time that we're requesting is not only reasonable, but makes sense for good decision-making at the city government level. So, I, I appreciate the fact, and I appreciate the council bringing up that we, we've done similar things like this before. But I think this is a different, different topic, and even if the conversation was had before, it was had under a different pretext, a different set of rules, a different set of state laws. And so, allowing council and the public to have that conversation before we make an applicant project decision, I think, just makes good sense. So, I, I respectfully disagree, but with utmost respect, of course.
Okay. I, I just wanted to just present my point of view. Thank you very much. And also just relay what I heard earlier in the discussion. Okay. And with that, Commissioner Leibig, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I'm going to, because we're splitting them out, I'm going to read them all.
Sure.
I recommend that we find that the Class 1, Class 3, and Class 5 categorical exemptions are the appropriate level of environmental review for the project under CEQA, and find that the exemptions reflect the independent judgment of the city as lead agency under CEQA. I move that we approve the Planning Commission Resolution 16-1 PC, recommending that the city council approve Ordinance 16-3 regarding amendments to Title 17 zoning of municipal code. I move that we approve Planning Commission Resolution 16-2 PC, recommending that the city council approve Ordinance 16-4 regarding a proposed development agreement between the city and River Wellness DBA River Collective.
I second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Leibig, second by Commissioner Sternfeld.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
And we will need to have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Commissioner Moore, how is, how do you vote on this item?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomber?
Yes.
Commissioner Leibig?
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfelds?
Aye.
Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
And Chairperson Guerrero?
No.
Thank you.
And then I would move to continue, item number four, to the first meeting after council has their first read.
It'd be April 7th would be what we recommend, if you were to continue this, we would recommend you continue it to April 7th.
Do we want to be certain about that?
Yes.
Okay. I move, we, we continue item number, I'm sorry, item number five to April 7th.
I second.
Commissioner Leibig moved, and Commissioner Sternfeld second. All in favor, signal. Um, there's a, is there a roll call vote that we should take on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Austin, how do you vote on this item?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Tomber?
Aye.
Commissioner Leibig?
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfelds?
Aye.
And Chairperson Guerrero?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is the public hearing regarding the conditional use permit number P15-0062 for a proposed wireless telecommunications facility at 2150 Stone Boulevard. And I think we have Commissioner Laffey, I mean, Mr. Laffey is going to be doing the presentation tonight?
Yes, Mr. Laffey will begin this presentation momentarily.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Item number three was previously heard at the December 17th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. At that meeting, it was continued. Planning commissioners had a couple of concerns about the proposed wireless facility at 2150 Stone Boulevard. One of, one of them was design-related. Commissioners wanted to see alternative designs. And the other concern was, why couldn't the, the facility locate at a building-mounted, or why couldn't it be a building-mounted facility at one of the nearby, at the nearby port or the Rice Co-op? So, since this item is being brought back to the commission tonight because of the 150-day shock clock, the expiration date is fast approaching. March 24th is when the shock clock expires. So, this leaves us with one meeting after this one, if, if need be. So, we have that in our back pocket. So, AB 57 is a recent law that went into effect, which, an application for a wireless facility is deemed approved after 150 days if, if an action is not made. So, staff is requesting an action be made tonight, an action of approval. If need be, though, there is the second meeting, a meeting after this in two weeks. So, since the December 17th meeting, the applicant has reached out to the property owners at the port and the Rice Co-op, and I believe some other locations as well. But nothing definite has come out of those meetings yet, but they are still determining the feasibility of, of those sites. The applicant also proposes a wireless, a water tower design, which is 80 feet tall. They, they provide the photo sims, but not any project plans. So, staff is recommending approval tonight, and this concludes my presentation.
And the applicant like to provide a presentation?
Yeah, the applicant has...
All right. We'll open up the public hearing for the applicant to provide a presentation.
Hi. Michelle Wells from Epic Wireless for Verizon. So, as Seamus stated at the last hearing, you set me off to discover whether the Port of Sacramento would be a viable relocation or Federated Rice Co-op. So, I met with Rick Toft along with my RF engineer, my construction manager, and the manager that I deal with at Verizon, and we walked Port of Sacramento and then crossed the street, and also met with the GM at Federated Rice Co-op, David Buffoni. The Port of Sacramento is not going to work for us, because the main gap that we're trying to fill is on the other side of Federated Rice. So, we're trying to shoot away from the, the water, and Federated Rice, being a very tall metal building, is kind of blocks our RF, I guess it's the, the frequency waves. So, the Federated Rice, on the other hand, is, turned out to be closer than even the site that we applied for, which has posed some problems for us, but not for you, as it was, seemed to be a more preferred location on behalf of the Planning Commission. It's in the industrial complex, it's farther away from residential, and David, the GM at Federated Rice, has told us that he would be willing to entertain a proposal from Verizon. However, there are still a lot of questions that we have about the location. It's a very busy, thriving corporation, as you all, I'm sure, are well aware. So, we have a lot of questions that we still need to answer. Seamus and Mr. Tilly are requesting that you approve our application tonight. I would request a continuance, please, and I can tell you that we have a tolling agreement that is being drafted by our attorneys with the City of Sacramento, or, I'm sorry, West Sac, to postpone the shock clock until we answer all these questions that we still have. We have... have. We have tweaked the design for 5120 Stone Boulevard. However, our RF engineer is now stating that that potential location might, we might be withdrawing the the application at some point because of what we've found. So, once again, I would like you to kind of withhold off by making a decision on the application tonight and instead grant a continuance. I know that potentially because the shot clock is supposed to expire March 24, I'm not sure if maybe the only continuance you can make tonight is to the next hearing. Okay. So can I ask, if I do get a tolling agreement, can we have a further continuance after that? Because.
Yeah, in this scenario, what we would recommend is that, for now at least, if it's in the commission's desire to continue to our next meeting, and then if we do indeed get a acceptable tolling agreement in between, then we may then, you know, continue it longer. But we do need to have that agreement in hand and make sure it's something that the city can agree to.
Okay.
Because without that, we do need to make a decision on this by our next meeting. So we will certainly assume we will receive that, you know, tolling agreement, as Ms. Wells has indicated. But until we have that in our hand, I would not be comfortable recommending continuing to anything past our next meeting.
Do you have any questions? Any questions by the commissioners? Sure. Commissioner Moore?
I I appreciate what you did. I think that's great. And hopefully, something will work out for you. But if you're coming back to Stone Boulevard, I didn't see a plot plan that says how big this is going to be and Seamus, whether it'll even fit on that little piece of property with setbacks and everything. So I didn't even know if it'll work because I don't know how big it'll be. And it's okay. I just said if it comes back, I need to see something like that. Plus, I need to see the design of what you're proposing for the little outhouse building there.
Yes.
And I didn't see either one. And so I was going to have to question both of them. So if you come back with that one, I need to see that.
Absolutely. The reason that I don't have all of those materials tonight is because, quite frankly, we're holding off on continuing to spend the money to push the site further until we know for sure this is going to go ahead.
I appreciate that.
But if we do indeed, I will bring back a, you know, a full package the next time.
Commissioner Sternfeld?
I think my question may be for staff. What is the downside to just denying this application tonight so that we don't have to deal with a tolling agreement or a shot clock, based on the applicant statements that they're not, they're likely withdrawing this application in the future?
Well, the commission would have to have a basis for that denial and indicate based on which of the finding or findings that they were unable to make and why. And since we don't have that in front of you tonight, if the commission, if that's what the commission was wanting to do, we'd actually would rather bring back find draft findings for your consideration in that scenario. But it does seem that the tolling agreement could buy us a little time to see if there is a way if this one can work or not.
And and I could I just say something?
Sure, please.
That would be a kind of, what I can say is, when I left December 17 with the instructions to do these things, I did it in good faith. And it would be hurtful or harmful to Verizon if you denied it tonight because there is a possibility that we will still be back with the full package that Commissioner Commissioner Moore just asked for, and we will keep going with our application. We're just still in the process of answering the questions that you requested of me from December. So I would ask that you not deny it if possible.
Okay, that's I appreciate that. That's really helpful. I wasn't sure what we're from your comments, I got the impression that maybe the site wasn't even working for anymore. And so at that point, I was trying to figure out why we were why we're still looking at it, given the lack of information we have about.
I can say we we are, we don't have an equivocal answer yet. So.
I I agree with Mr. Moore. I think I'd want to see a full design. For what, as city staff, one more question. At what point did you get this most recent information about wanting to draft a tolling agreement? Is this?
Well, we have been discussing the notion of a tolling agreement before some time now, anticipation of maybe needing a little bit more time. Admittedly, the shot clock expiration has sort of snuck up on us a little bit since we were here back in December. But it is something we have been, you know, requesting because it is a request. We cannot demand it. It is a request. But we do feel like it would help in this situation and buy us a little bit of time so that we can bring a full package back for your consideration at a future meeting. So we are optimistic that we could get if we can get the tolling agreement, that will, you know, help us in this effort.
Well, let me just say thank you for taking the the additional efforts to go out and look at other sites. And I'm glad to hear that you found one that may suit your purposes better. And certainly, from a development and impact of building new infrastructure versus using infrastructure we already have, I think it could be a win-win. And I'm happy to to support your request to continue this item at the appropriate time.
I know everybody else is saying it, but I do want to express my appreciation for going out and and doing this this type of work. I won't add too much to the, if this does come back, we do need to see the improvements. But that said, if your if the plan does work out to find an alternate location, you don't have to come back, as that would be a zoned administrative action at that point. So, thank you.
Commissioner Tomber?
Yes, and thank you very much for taking the time to do everything that we have requested and provided us with your feedback today on what we need to do moving forward and keeping in touch with staff on, you know, where we need to go today. And we'll see what we can do for a continuance.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't have any requests for public comment at this time. So I will close the public hearing and.
Just want to note that we did receive that one comment letter in writing. I don't believe the individual authored it is here, but want to make sure that's noted as part of the record.
Okay, thank you. All right. Back to discussion with staff and perhaps a motion if you wanted to avoid the discussion and just move forward with the continuance.
Sure, I'm I move that we continue this item to the next meeting.
March 17.
March 17.
March 17.
Second.
Commissioner Leibig moves. Commissioner Moore seconds. All in favor, do we need to take a roll call vote? No?
No.
No. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No? And no extensions? Okay, motion approved. And our next, oops, let me look at my agenda. We're done. All right, thank you. Next item is informal discussion. Any any other comments? Formal discussion? No?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.